I'd like to call the Mentor City Council Regular Meeting for June 3, 2025, to order. The invocation tonight will be given by Councilperson Marn.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
[Inaudible].
Before we get started tonight, it's time to say goodbye to one of us. Dave Malinowski.
Don't say it that way.
I know, but he's leaving our family in a way. He'll always be around, but Dave, is it 26 or 29 years that you've been?
Twenty-nine. It feels like 26.
Feels like 26. You know, I think I speak for all of council and all administrations saying, "Thank you. Thank you for all those perfect audits. Thank you for everything that financially ran smoothly when it could have been bumpy." I don't think "thank you" is enough, but that's, you know, thank you. So, Ken, I think you probably have something to say that's great.
Yeah, I certainly do. So, I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Malinowski for the last 15 years, and he's been our Finance Director, I think for 18 years, I want to say, 18, right, Dave? As Finance Director? I believe so. Leave it to the Finance Director to correct the data, but for 19 years and then 29 years total with the city and before that as our Assistant Finance Director. And Mr. Malinowski has been an incredible advocate for the city and an incredible asset to the city for all those years. He has been a real stable force on our executive staff, and the residents of Mentor have been very fortunate to know that their tax dollars have not only been invested wisely, but they've been watched carefully and diligently for all 29 of those years. Some of the things that we can be particularly proud of and thank Mr. Malinowski for is, first of all, that over all those years, he's developed an amazing staff, and I know all of you had the benefit of working with them on things large and small. You know, we've been able to work together on a number of policy initiatives that have really led to incredibly sound fiscal policy and conservative policy that has served this community extraordinarily well. Under David's leadership, we've raised our bond rating. We've sold bonds, tens of millions of dollars in bonds to allow for important projects that have gone forward that our residents have been able to enjoy. All of the things that people love about this community, our Finance Director has probably touched in some way, shape, or form. We've been able to see for the last 10 years essentially as perfect an audit performance as you can for a community. We've gotten the Auditors Award with Distinction for the last decade and awards, I think every year you've been here, through GFOA. And I think as much as anything else, you know, right now, our city is probably in its strongest financial condition in its history, and so a lot of that credit has to do with David's stewardship. And aside from all of that, he's just one heck of a good guy to work with. I mean, David's a great gentleman, easygoing. I don't think there's one person in our organization that would say they haven't enjoyed thoroughly working with him over the years. I certainly have, and he will be missed. There will be a huge void to fill, and it's been a real honor to work with you, David, and congratulations. Your gain and your future is our loss, but we thank you for all of the many, many years of service to the city. I don't think the community can fully appreciate all the things that you've done to ensure our success, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ken, for those kind words. My daughter texted me a couple weeks ago, less than two, actually, it was a week ago Wednesday, last Wednesday, and said, the text said, "Hey, Dad, the city of Mentor was voted the number-one city to live in in the state of Ohio." And to be honest, I was a little bit surprised. I don't know if it was pulling a prank on me or what, but I texted back and I said, "Holly, it must have something to do with the fiscal, financial management of the city." And she texted back, "You're absolutely right, Dad," and let them know to keep the run going, and they have big shoes to fill. Very wise daughter. First thank you I'll give is to my daughter Holly down in Columbus. But if you bear with me, I'd like to just read kind of what I wrote so I don't scramble around too much. I don't like to do that at council meetings. I typically don't read staff memos. I just thank the city manager and, in a very succinct way, typically present the legislation. And that'd be my advice to Bonnie right now, too. But anyway, this time, I'd like to break tradition and maybe read what I wrote. There's a little bit of things in here, and it won't be too long, but a little bit of my history that are secrets that maybe everybody hasn't heard. The first one is, 50 years ago, I started my first real employment at a small business called Mentor Plastics. As a factory worker in a plastic injection mold manufacturing shop, I learned two main things, one, good work ethic, and two, that I did not want to breathe the smell of burnt plastic as my upcoming career. That was 50 years ago. My thanks go out to my parents, my mother and my father, for that one. Moving on, so a few short years later, off to school, I went to become a humble accountant. I don't know why accounts are humble, but Bonnie would agree with me, I think. I graduated from Cleveland State University, became a CPA, obtained my MBA from Baldwin Wallace College, and while working in the private sector for a period of 15 years, I learned that lesson was that I made a very good choice. It was a very good employment experience. This one, I have to thank, once again, my mother, my father, but particularly my family, my beautiful wife Christina and two children. They endured quite a bit during that tenure. Moving on, April 15, 1996, a day that is typically tax filing due date, and it was that year. April 15, I started at the city of Mentor, my first day on the job as the Assistant Director of Finance, and I walked right into the 1995 financial audit report, April. I think that was, we're trying for our 11th consecutive, I think, at that time. I became the Acting Finance Director subsequently and full-time Finance Director in February of 2006. I learned that I had made even a better choice, leaving, some people call it the dark side, I don't know, other people have the inversion of that, but it was a refreshing environment. The people, my coworkers, so friendly, and it was definitely a very good choice. I have to thank very much for that Mr. John C. Ayton, retired Finance Director from 20 years ago, for making a vacancy for that slot, and also all of city council, past and present, big, big part of where I was the last 20 years. Thank you for your support, every one of you, and the city manager, past and present. Then, on Friday, this past Friday, May 11, or May 30, I completed the most fulfilling public-sector career here at the city. Good news, we filed our unaudited statements before the close of business that day. I have particularly thanks to the entire finance staff, but Bonnie Lingefelter, Jill Laner, in particular, want to thank you for that. It's a good way to close out a retirement, to file that report. I want to thank all my coworkers here, the city manager, the department heads, including Judge Trebbitts, wherever you are, Judge. He's a fiscally-minded judge, and I'm thankful for that. I want to thank my entire family once again, especially my beautiful wife, and for the constant support for sharing all the celebrations of awards for excellence in financial reporting over the past 30 years. That had to be brutal. So, finally, I want to say that for me personally, my favorite part of the hundreds of city council meetings that I have attended, and I truly mean this, is at the beginning of this meeting, like we did tonight, an invocation was read, and to me, that is a highlight of these meetings. These meetings begin with, "Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day," and that is very important, to be thankful, and then, as Councilman Marn read tonight, "Help us because we need help." It's another great phrase in a prayer, and also, "Guide us in wisdom." I really, really have enjoyed that invocation hundreds of times, and hopefully I'll continue to enjoy it from a different platform, but appreciate it, being with all of you and being
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay.
a coworker of all of you.
So, moving right along, public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we have none.
Thank you. That's all I have.
New legislation, Ordinance Number 25-0-048.
An ordinance transferring funds, advancing funds, and revising appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Ken, this is usually where we hear from David Malinowski, but he just retired. We will miss you.
It is.
Leave travels.
We will turn this over to Acting Finance Director, Mrs. Lingefelter. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac, members of council.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I just say one more thing? Christina, we thank you, too, for sharing him and, you know, putting up with the rest
The legislation in front of you today has one transfer. It is a quarterly transfer from the general fund to the self-insurance medical fund.
of us and all the time he has to put, he's had to put in over the years.
My pleasure.
We have one advance of funds for a state grant, and we also have a couple of small appropriation
Okay, we're going to move along. Let's begin. Julie, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Marn?
revisions for a state grant and also just $11,000 for an increase in an engineering cost.
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
Recommend that you approve this.
He is excused.
Mr. Kirchner?
Move to suspend.
Here.
Second.
Mr. Krieger?
Julie, please call the roll.
Here.
Mr. Marn?
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Blake?
Moving on, approval of minutes. Yes. Council, you are on receipt of the May 20, 2025 Work Session Minutes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Mrs. Dowling?
Second.
Yes.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner? Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger? Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Donovan?
Council, you're also on receipt of the May 20, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Mrs. Dowling?
Second.
Yes.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner? Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger? Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Donovan?
Council, you're also on receipt of the May 20, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Move to approve.
Yes.
Second.
Mr. Kirchner?
Julie, please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Marn? Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Okay. Yes. So, moving right along, public hearings, we have none.
Mr. Donovan?
Tabled legislation, we have none.
Yes.
New legislation, Ordinance Number 25-0-048.
An ordinance transferring funds, advancing funds, and revising appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Ken, this is usually where we hear from David Malinowski, but he just retired.
It is. We will turn this over to Acting Finance Director, Mrs. Lingefelter.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac, members of council. The legislation in front of you today has one transfer. It is a quarterly transfer from the general fund to the self-insurance medical fund. We have one advance of funds for a state grant, and we also have a couple of small appropriation revisions for a state grant and also just $11,000 for an increase in an engineering cost. Recommend that you approve this.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance Number 25-0-048 has been approved. Next is Ordinance Number 25-0-049.
An ordinance accepting and awarding a bid contract to JTO Inc. for the Civic Center Park Improvements Project and declaring an emergency.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Councilors, you're aware, this is the project that will include the addition of the new parking lot. It will also include a turnaround area near the rear, near the east portion of the municipal pool at Civic Center, as well as a drop-off area for the pickleball courts there, as well as the addition of two basketball courts and the resurfacing of the existing single basketball court, which will be repurposed for pickleball. Mr. Swigger?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. The Parks and Recreation Department received six bids on May 23 for the Civic Center Park Master Plan Improvement Project. The bids range from a low bid of approximately $1.6 million to a high bid of a little bit over $2 million. We're recommending that JTO Incorporated of Mentor, Ohio, as they were the lowest and best bidder. The project consists of the construction of a 162-space parking lot, moving the basketball courts, and the addition of pickleball courts, walkways, et cetera. JTO Incorporated of Mentor, Ohio, their bid was reviewed and found to be in conformance of all contract requirements and are qualified to perform the work within the contract. It's therefore recommended that the contract be awarded to JTO in an amount of $1,648,888. The completion date for the parking lot is September 5 of this year, and the remaining work, including the courts, construction, completion date is November 14 of this year. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance Number 25-0-049 has been approved. Next is Ordinance Number 25-0-050.
An ordinance accepting and awarding a bid contract to Carvo Companies, Inc. for the Corduroy Road Resurfacing Project and declaring an emergency.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Swigger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Bids were opened on Friday, May 9, for the Corduroy Road Resurfacing Project. The project will provide asphalt pavement resurfacing on Corduroy Road from the south end of the Causeway to Garden Lane. The bid package consisted of a base bid and three alternates. The three bids received ranged from a low base bid plus the alternates of $370,820 to a high base bid plus alternates of $430,209. It's been determined that Carvo Companies Incorporated of Stowe, Ohio, submitted the lowest total bid of $370,820. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost was $410,000. Project has been awarded a $245,500 grant through the Ohio Public Works Commission to cover up to 50% of project costs. A review of the bid from Carvo Companies indicates is in conformance of all contract requirements. A contract awarded to Carvo Companies Incorporated, who are experienced and qualified to perform this work, is recommended. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance Number 25-0-050 has been approved. Next is Ordinance Number 25-0-051.
An ordinance accepting and awarding a bid contract to A&amp;J Cement Contractors, Inc. for the Sidewalk Repair Pedestrian Safety Program Zone 4D, including alternate 1, and declaring an emergency.
Ken, I'm going to come to you first, and then we have a speaker who wants to speak on this ordinance, following whatever you have.
Sure. I'll defer to Mr. Swigger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Two bids were opened on Friday, May 9, for the Sidewalk Repair and Pedestrian Safety Program Zone 4D in Ward 4. The bids received for the project included a base bid and two alternates. Alternate 1 is the preferred alternate, includes heated sidewalk at the main entrance to the senior center. The bids ranged from a low base bid plus alternate 1 of approximately $921,000 to a high base bid plus alternate 1 of approximately $1 million. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost for the base bid plus alternate 1 was $895,000. The best bid, in this case, the second lowest, was received from A&amp;J Cement Contractors Incorporated of Utled, Ohio, whose bid was found to be in conformance of all contract requirements. Based on a review of the base bids submitted by both contractors, including a review of the experience record over the past five years, experience on projects of similar size and scope, and take into account the company's performance on past city projects, is the opinion of this office that A&amp;J Cement Contractors of Utled, Ohio, submitted the lowest and best bid of $1,00,014,050. It's therefore recommended that a contract be awarded to A&amp;J Cement Contractors in that amount for the base bid plus alternate 1. It's anticipated that work will begin in June with a completion date set for September 19 of this year. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. And we have one speaker who wishes to speak on this topic. Sharon Hagan, if you would come up to the podium, give us your name, your address, and you have four minutes.
My name is Sharon Hagan. I'm at 5270 Blair Road, Perry, Ohio, 4481. I am 51% shareholder of Lake County Landscape and Supply. I am the Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer. Lake County Landscape and Supply was invited to bid this project by the city of Mentor. We invested dozens of hours only to read in the agenda that we don't qualify, according to the engineer. On May 9, Lake County Landscape and Supply submitted our bid for the project. We were 30% over engineer's estimate. The other bidder was 13% over engineer's estimate, almost $90,000 difference. This is essentially a 38,000-square-foot sidewalk project with two additional stops, a Civic Center and Senior Center. 2018, Lake County Landscape and Supply finished 59,000-square-feet sidewalk project, which included all streets from Route 2 South to Bellflower at the bend, including Bellflower and Reynolds, with no traffic issues. No liquidated damages assessed on this or any other project performed by Lake County Landscape and Supply. Lake County Landscape and Supply passed on over $1 million in quotes because nobody from the engineer's office contacted us about any concerns. The engineer made no contact with Lake County Landscape and Supply until June, sorry, 6/15 yesterday. Two messages were left with the office on May 30 after we read the agenda for the June 3 meeting. Lake County Landscape and Supply called engineering on May 22 to find out which alternate, if any, they were going with so we could plan the rest of our season. All we were told then was they didn't know what they were doing yet, and there was no guarantee it would be on the 6/3 agenda. No indication was made during this conversation, before the conversation, or after the conversation, the city was not considering Lake County Landscape and Supply to be awarded. It doesn't make sense to us that the city of Mentor would cost their taxpayers $90,000 extra for a sidewalk project. Lake County Landscape and Supply submitted the bid bond, as well as other required documents. If the bonding company can determine us qualified for the bond after their due diligence, why wouldn't the city of Mentor, at the very least, ask Lake County Landscape and Supply why we think we could do the work? We do not bid on projects that we don't think we can complete within the given timeframe. We ask the city we consider this decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Before I ask to move forward, is the administration completely sure that, you know, everything was followed as far as contractors? I know we have responsible contractor legislation and whatnot, and they had mentioned they had, in the past, they had done some work for the city that, I don't know whether it was unsatisfactory or satisfactory or not, but I know red flags tend to sometimes move to remove people from consideration, so is there an explanation for that as far as?
Like, I think if, I'll just chime in, I think the city engineer did a pretty good job of explaining the reasons why we're choosing to go with the second lowest bidder. Again, the city has a responsibility, and I think our residents understand this, to take not just the lowest in every case, but the best bid. And in this case, you know, what is best for our residents is a project that we feel is likely to come in on time, that's going to produce the kind of quality work that doesn't have to be redone. When we look at, you know, it's generally not our, and we did not have a good first experience with our guests for the first contract, and this is a much larger contract than the last was. I think it's important to understand that we don't generally, it takes a great deal to remove somebody from consideration for a bid because circumstances change as time goes on. So, we would be looking at their recent experience over the last, you know, four, five years or more to see if they have since that time managed larger projects more effectively. And again, I think that's one of the considerations that goes in, and it goes into our final decision-making process. You know, we've had very good experiences in the past with A&amp;J Cement. They've done their projects on time. They've performed the work well. We've had very few complaints and resident complaints and inconvenience to them and delays, you know, because you got to remember when you're talking about, there's a reason that our program is, we refer to it as a sidewalk program, but the official title is a pedestrian safety program. So, when slabs remain open for longer periods of time, that creates a safety hazard to our residents, and those are liabilities that we're very aware of and look to avoid. So, we take very seriously the review of these bids. I think it's no, I assure you all are of the same opinion, we prefer not to spend more money than we have to on any project, but there are greater concerns, and getting the work done in a quality and a timely basis is more overrides our concerns on price in this particular case. So, I concur with the overview that the city engineer has made. We've reviewed it independently, and I think he made the right decision.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance Number 25-0-051 has been approved. Next is Ordinance Number 25-0-052.
An ordinance accepting and authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Penn Care, Inc. for the purchase of a 2025 Ford F-550 4x4 chassis Braun ambulance and declaring an emergency.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Sack, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac, members of council. Our bid opening was on May 23, where we received one bid from Penn Care, who will build us a 2025 Braun ambulance box on a Ford F-550 chassis at a cost of $308,940. This ambulance will replace Station 3's ambulance, which is a 2018 International chassis with a little over 160,000 miles. This purchase will complete our transition from diesel engines to gas engines for our frontline rescue squads. The decision to switch from diesel to gas was driven in 2019 just by several factors, including fuel costs, maintenance costs, and the need to use diesel exhaust fluid[1740.98] reduced, according to our maintenance division. With this bid, we have been able to secure warranties of 150,000 miles with all warranty work being done locally at Classic Ford. So thank you for your consideration.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 25-0-052 has been approved. Second readings, we have none. Third readings, we have none. Now on to managers' report. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, we have one open cut request. This is at 7361 Case Avenue for the purpose of a gas service connection from Embridge Gas, Ohio. We request your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel, we also have, I do want to congratulate another one of our employees. Fire Lieutenant Ken Winner will be retiring from Mentor Fire Department after 25 years of dedicated service. He retires on June 6th, and again, he's been a great addition and serving our community over the years, so we want to thank him for his service to the city as well. Mentor Senior Center invites those 55 and older to attend an informative open house on Monday, June 30th from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. Whether you're interested in staying fit, learning new skills, meeting new friends, or just having fun, the Mentor Senior Center is the place to be. Pre-registration is required for this free event, and you can register by calling 440-974-5725. Yesterday, asphalt road repair program contractor Phillips Paving began milling operations on Foothill Drive, Bernard Drive, Biltmore Road, and Forestview Avenue, Beaver Creek Drive, Colony Court, Edwards Street, and Curtis Street. Those are scheduled this week. That milling will be followed by pavement repairs and surface paving, and we expect our project to be completed by August 29th, and we're also going to see concrete repair starting this, next Monday, June 9th as well. And that project as well, citywide, will be completed by August 30th as well. And finally, counsel, we have two new businesses to announce. We have the Stretch Zone at 8900 Mentor Avenue and the Ohio State Fire Protection at 7840 Tyler Boulevard. That is not the Ohio State Fire Protection, just Ohio State Fire Protection. But we want to thank them for their investment, and of course, I think, I don't think I need to mention this, but tonight starts our Mentor Rocks event in schedule, so we encourage everyone to take a look. We think we have another great lineup this year, starting with tonight and 20 Ride, our Zac Brown tribute band. So we welcome our residents and guests for another great season, which will mark our 100th show at the amphitheater this season. That's all.
Thank you, Ken. All right, clerks' correspondence. Julie?
Nothing to report.
All right, commission committee reports. Counsel, you're in receipt of the meeting minutes of the Municipal Planning Commission, May 1st, 2025. Old business, we definitely have a piece. Julie, if you would, I'm going to have you read that so that everybody understands what that is, that we have under old business coming out.
Okay. Application for a conditional use permit to allow a car wash, Clean Express Auto Wash at 9361 Mentor Avenue, permanent parcel number 16B040540000160 in the B2 General Business District by Express Wash Concepts and Boston Market Real Estate Company.
Okay, thank you, Julie. We have, we have several speakers who want to speak on this tonight, but counsel, we've been asked to keep this on the table for now. There's more research and background information needs to come out on this. But before we get to speakers, I'm going to throw this over to Joe. Joe, you got something you'd like to add to this as we?
No, just to underscore the necessity of keeping this on the table, the council had determined to put it on the table pending the planning commission's review of an amended site plan. It was not able to do that, it just couldn't get processed in time for its last meeting, so we anticipate the planning commission to have a better look at it as revised at its June 12th meeting, I think is the next one. A few other items that we want to take a look at is the recorded easements. I have not been provided those just yet, and also some other technical issues relative to the traffic study. So still some items to go through, and therefore, in my judgment, it's not ready for action at this time.
All right, well, in my tenures on council, I don't think I've received as many emails on a subject as I have on this one. I personally have gotten 30 to myself, 15 phone calls, plus numerous to all of city council. You know, some of those emails were a little bit tough on council. I'd like to remind everybody who's, you know, considering this, is that council has not taken action on this. This is a result of the approval of the conditional use permit by the planning commission on May 1st. Three of us on council called this up to the council level. A lot of us who live in that area deal with the traffic, and we know how bad that gets. I'm probably not supposed to speak too much on this tonight, but the traffic study that was done by the car wash was done on April 2nd, which was a Wednesday, and looking at the history of the weather that day, it was 59 degrees and drizzly. So hopefully, when we get our analysis back, we'll have a little bit better of a picture of what the impact will be. So I'd like to move on and call up speakers.
Mr. President, a quick question for the law director. So, Mr. Zeman, when planning commission is fully done, and it either approves it or not approves it, then council will be in a position, if they approve it, to call it up and then make a council's recommendation, because they're a separate body?
Well, the only thing that's currently in front of the planning commission is the site plan, and so the issue as to whether or not a CUP shall issue is solely on council's table at this point.
Okay, so we're just waiting for the full information?
If you choose to. I certainly recommend that. You know, all sides obviously deserve a fair hearing in these matters, and obviously, a lot of issues and concerns relative to traffic management have been presented, as well as, you know, the easements that we still haven't taken a look at either.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption. All right. First speaker, Tammy DeCarlo. If you'd like to come up, please give your name, address, and four minutes, please.
My name is Don Tammy DeCarlo, and I live at 7125 Briar Cliff Court. I'm sure my feelings are equal to everyone opposed to this placement of the car wash. I live in the Wayside Lakes neighborhood. For those unaware, it sits behind Trader Joe's, and I travel this stretch of road multiple times a day. The stretch of Route 20 between Target and Myers is already overloaded, to the point where my niece got her driver's license last year. As a new driver, one of my biggest areas of concern was the Route 20 intersection, particularly where she was filling up its speedway. Ironically, at 11:47 today, I had my alert and oriented 90-year-old father-in-law in the car with me, sitting in Walgreens lot, and he commented, "Just look at all this traffic going through here. It's one hell of a busy intersection." As for the conditional use permit, permenter code 1135.04, action by commission, there's a ding at nearly every component of this section. Number one, in harmony with or adversely affecting the neighboring properties, this location is not in harmony and will certainly adversely affect surroundings. The congestion present in entering and exiting speedway, Walmart gas, and Walmart in addition to all the other surrounding buildings will amplify whether you're entering or exiting from Route 20 or using the Heasley Road entrances. I really doubt anyone without financial gain and this proposed business would feel this will not occur. Number two, adversely affect the health or safety of persons working or residing in the neighborhood. Obviously, this is a resounding yes. It would create more traffic congestion to the thousands of people using that intersection every day. Not only that intersection, but what I call the Walmart Road off Heasley. It also gives access to the salon, Toad's, the Bund Cake, the thrift shop. You have drive hours crisscrossing these roadways as it is to find their way out, with trying to add another workflow roadway to it. Let's not forget the valuable Mentor Fire Department station, number one. Have you ever been in that area when the fire rescue staff are trying to navigate a jammed area? It isn't pretty, and I thank those men and women for their service. One can only deny the troubling truth if you don't live here or do not use the intersection or are not appropriately representing the citizens of Mentor. Change of neighborhood character, yes. We already have a busy car wash less than a half a mile away that has created traffic difficulties at times. I say this without complaint because it's public knowledge that the ownership and Mentor officials are working on continual plans to alleviate traffic to the point where there have been police officials directing traffic. In addition to this, there are at least five restaurants and numerous other establishments, including Busy Heasley Point with the UPS store, a very busy nail salon, restaurants and Starbucks. Add in Walgreens, Jersey Mike's, and Little Shops in there, yes, Pastina's and Mean Mugs as well. Navigate to Stone's Road East and you have Zappi's, Trader Joe's, et cetera. The addition of this car wash would be like adding fuel to the fire of congestion. Will this be detrimental to public welfare? Yes. It is obvious that all the pre-mentioned situations that I have pointed out. The only place in time there is, is at 4:00 a.m. on my way to work, there is me and the speedway crew, and voila, I can breeze right through. And number five, in accordance with purpose intent of the comprehension plan of city, what exactly would be the beneficial purpose intent, I would ask, except to create increased daily chaos for the residents of Mentor and our visitors? Fill an empty building and create financial gain for its owners? None are to the benefit of the residents of Mentor and surrounding communities. Number six, does it apply with any adaptive policies? I really don't have that answer for that. The definition of absurd is widely unreasonable, illogical, or inappropriate. As a resident who travels this intersection multiple times a day, what is absurd is the fact that this business proposal made it through the Mentor Planning Commission where a CUP was granted. I appreciate the Mentor Planning Commission for the work that they do, however, in this instance, it's quite difficult to not feel anything but let down. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, next up, and of course, you know, we want to try to not be redundant, because I think our first speaker has hit a lot of topics, but I want to give everybody the opportunity to speak. Next up is Suzanne Woodbury. Please come up to the podium. Name, address, and four minutes.
My name is Suzanne Woodbury. I live at 7 Meadow Lawn Drive, unit number 10. As you know, that's right at Route 20, so that's my concern. I'm concerned about the car wash opening up at the old Boston Market location. Route 20 is the busiest road in Mentor, and Heasley Road intersection is the busiest east of Route 615. Two car washes kitty-corner at that intersection is too much. Three car washes within two miles is not necessary. Zappi's and Cardinal car washes are located back off the road, but I don't see where a new car wash at this location would be back far enough to not cause a traffic jam. It is my hope that an alternative for another location for this new business could be found somewhere else in Mentor to benefit everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is Janice Sardio. And please name, address, and four minutes.
Thank you. My name is Janice Sardio, and I live at 9585 Green Valley Drive, Mentor. Good afternoon, President of Council. The car wash proposed at the old Boston Market site is not feasible in this already very congested traffic area. The old Boston Market site is sandwiched between a very busy Speedway and Murphy's USA and are at the intersection of Heasley Road and Mentor Avenue with Chillicothe Road going to the south from Mentor Avenue. On Heasley Road, we have Mentor Fire Station, number one, at 6929 Heasley Road that must navigate through this area to get fire rescue to Mentor citizens and ambulances to the Cleveland Clinic Mentor Hospital ER or the UH TriPoint ER. Also at the intersection of Heasley Road, Chillicothe, and Mentor Avenue, along with Speedway, you will find Starbucks Anap Plaza, Jersey Mike's Subs Anap Plaza, Pastina's Anap Plaza, Walmart and Murphy's USA gas station, Mean Mugs Pub, Winking Lizard, and Zappatelli's Anap Plaza there, Salvation Army AAA Anap Plaza there. Do we really need another car wash in this location? Currently, from my house at 9585 Green Valley Drive, within 3.2 miles or less, I have three car wash options. Blue Falls Car Wash on Heasley Road, which is 3.2 miles from my house. Cardinal Auto Wash, which is 2.1 miles from my house, and Zappi's Auto Wash, which is 1.9 miles from my house. Along Mentor Avenue, other major retail businesses such as Walmart, Meyer, Trader Joe's, Barb and Patty's, Kohl's, and Target are also to be taken into consideration when it comes to traffic flow in this area. Please take a long look at the Boston Market property that is tucked in, I mean, literally tucked in between Speedway, Salvation Army, and Murphy's USA. We just are concerned about the plans for the in-and-out access while customers are trying to access a car wash that is really not needed in this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, one more on this topic. Laura Whitney. And name, address, and four minutes.
I'm Laura Whitney. I live at 9590 Brimfield Drive. I also live in Wayside Lakes. And really, I don't have much more to add than what these ladies have already said. The traffic in just the area from Wayside Lakes to Heasley Road is usually horrible, whether you're going eastbound, westbound, and to add more confusion to the car wash that's already there, just yesterday, I sat in traffic going westbound because everybody was trying to turn left to get into Zappi's that was full. I just can't imagine having another car wash within a quarter mile and having the same kind of traffic situation that's going on now. So I'm in opposition of the car wash.
Thank you for speaking today. Okay, that's it for the car wash, and of course, that will remain table. All right, moving on, new business.
Mr. President, old business?
Yes, oh, sorry, old business.
Okay. So at the last meeting, I brought up our Safety Village, and Mr. Ron Wasson, what a great job him and his friends and committees in our administration has done. By the way, happy belated birthday, Ron. And he told me to tell everybody that he wants to be around another 50 years to be a thorn in people's sides. I go, we look forward to it, so we appreciate it. At that time, we were looking, Ron and I were discussing about an additional $30,000 to the Mentor Safety Village for the kids and to improve our city-owned property. After discussing this with Ron at length, that number could be a little bit high, could be a little bit low. So, sorry, Mr. Vernon, Mr. Philippiac, but Mr. Wasson's going to get a better cap on the numbers and exact number to the cent of what we feel that they need, and then that way, you guys could approve it, figure out what we can do, what we can't do, and then let's put it in an ordinance form so we can get this moving. I informed Mr. Wasson that we have a meeting the first Tuesday of July, and then again to the third Tuesday of August, so we plan on having done it one of those two meetings so we get this project wrapped up in early fall. So I appreciate it.
Okay, any other old business? New business?
President, I've been getting emails, too, not about the car wash, it's not my word. I've been getting emails about the police and the school negotiations and what's happening with that. Does anybody have an explanation where they're at? Maybe the law director or someone? Let us know where this police and the school negotiation is. I don't have any information on it.
Joe?
Yes, the manager's office just completed a revised agreement. I had a chance to look at it today. I think it's excellent. That's just my legal opinion. Probably some minor changes to it, and they'll present that to the administrators at the Board of Education. I don't want to get into details, it's negotiations at this point, but it's certainly well in process.
So then, we could look at approving that at either the 17th or July 1st?
I'm going to get it off my desk tomorrow. I would imagine the manager will get it over to the administration pretty fast, and so if, depending on the school board's, you know, comments and their review time, I don't know, it wouldn't be right prior to your summer recess.
Oh, good. So that's, yeah, that's perfect.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, good. All right, any other new business?
Mr. President? Yes, sir. As you know, we're trying to be as well-rounded as community as humanly possible, so we try to offer some amenities to whoever might be interested in that amenity, whether it be pickleball courts, the rec center, senior center to try to, you know, help our seniors out. Our senior center new parking lot was $2 million by the time the land was done, bought the land, grading, permitting, and all that planning and all that other good stuff. We try to put a lot of money in the roads and everything of that nature. The last meeting, we had an individual come up a few times, I should say, the last few meetings, we had an individual come up a few times, and about how we're spending money. Even that Wildwood was brought up, which, John, your favorite building at Wildwood, and the money that we're putting in Wildwood, which is a great arts and cultural situation. Love the building, love everything that goes on there, but is Wildwood for everybody. So every time we try to do something, once again, it's for the golf course, it's for Wildwood, it's for the senior center, it's for roads, anything that we can to make the City of Mentor to keep our number-one ranking, so to speak, and make things better. One of the things that she brought up, though, was, you know, how do you affect everybody? And it got me to thinking, well, I don't know how you affect everybody, because we're all living in Mentor, we're trying to make Mentor a better place, but how do you make it better for everybody? for everybody? And then, I remembered reading in the notifications that went out, that Lake Tran, their one-year moratorium was up on their sales tax increase. So, if you remember, Lake Tran decided that they had money, they decided not to charge for that's the sales tax, so we all got a break on our sales tax. The only thing that everyone bought was a quarter percent less in sales tax for a year. So it really helped everybody and helped everything. With our general fund the way that it is, and trying to help everybody, when it comes to our fire levy, it's 1.5 mils, it equates at $2.15 million per year. We authorized $3.15 million for slides at the Civic Center pool, another 1.6 and change tonight, so that's $5 million going to Civic Center, which would drastically needs updates. My kids spent all their early years there. It's fondest memories my wife and I have always had. So a fire levy would help us. So, what I want to look into doing is proposing a one-year moratorium on helping every citizen in Mentor of not paying that fire levy. We could pay for it out of our general fund. It's $2.15 million. Once again, we could afford $3.15 million for slides, another 1.6, call it $6.5 million for Civic Center Park improvements. We could help every citizen in this, in the city by paying that $2.15 million for a next-year one-year moratorium. I never want to desecrate or hurt our police and fire in any way, shape, or form. I think we're all in agreement of that. Without good schools, without good roads, without good amenities, without good police, without good fire, we're not a great community. We want to keep it as a great community, but we want to make all our residents happy. So, Mr. Flippiac, Mrs. Langefelter, and Mr. Fowler, who's not here tonight, I'll start with you guys real soon coming up, so that way we can move forward on approving this for everybody. Thank you.
Blake?
President Blake. I guess maybe what Mr. Martin's asked, Cardinal Martin's asking for is maybe what, how does that affect each household or taxpayer? Is there any way to come up with that and a statistic? If you guys, I mean, if you look into it?
Yeah, well, I mean, I would, it's, the answer to that is easy. Just look at their individual tax bills and see how much they're paying to the city of Mentor for their fire levy. I mean, aggregate, Mr. Martin is pretty, pretty spot-on in terms of the aggregate total benefit that we receive in revenue. How that impacts individual properties is just a function of their value.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, that closes new business. Persons before council, we have two. First, Lynn Mazika. And Lynn, name, address, four minutes.
I'm Lynn Mazika, and I live on Cliffwood Court in Mentor. Mr. President, members of council, members of the administration, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Mr. Donovan took a little thunder out of what I was going to say, but it's in a good cause, and that's fine. I'm not complaining. As a member of the support public education in Mentor, I'm asking for you to expedite that passage of a contract between city council and city, and school board to provide safety resource officers to Mentor schools. One of my greatest concerns is for the safety of our kids while in school. Times have changed, and now having an SRO in each of our school buildings is critical for kids' safety. I know that the city and the school's administration have been working for close to a year to reach an agreement. It would be great to have this in place and time to have the officers trained and equipped before the start of the new school year in August. There's at least, what is it, a 40, 40-day training period?
Forty hour.
Forty hour, so, that's just better. Forty-hour training period that they need to go through. The school needs to purchase whatever equipment they'll need. There's going to be time necessary, and we would really like to see our kids protected when they go back to school this year. And while this contract is not yet on your agenda, I ask for your support to get it on the agenda as soon as possible, and pass it as quickly as possible. And again, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Flippiac, I know you and I have had discussions about this subject. Would it be okay, Mr. Zeeman is a law director, to do something, whether it be via an email or anything of that nature, separate phone calls to different people of council to bring everyone up to speed?
I think that's good.
Because we're kind of caught, you know, in the middle, so to speak, where we're not exactly sure what's going on on both sides. At least I was, until you cleared it up.
Mr. President, would it be helpful, just give you like a two-minute summary of where we are?
Yeah, I think that would be good, Ken.
Okay, so, for, I think it had been accurately stated. For about the last year, the chief of police, myself, the superintendent, other members of the staff of the Mentor School District have been working on a, on an agreement that would provide a greater presence of school, of police officers in the, in more schools than just the high school. We do, we have been working with them for several years now, whereby they contract with some of our off-duty police officers to provide a greater presence in some of their facilities. This would be a more lasting presence. We were working, it took, it took quite a while for us to get to a point where we agreed on the terms, in terms of how those police officers would be functioning within the schools, what limitations they would have, what limitations they would not have. That language was worked out, I think, pretty well, to our both-side satisfaction sometime in February. The sticking point was the nature of the agreement itself. The school district was intending to hire the officers directly, following a model that had been, that's kind of in place, that's currently in place, similarly, with the Sheriff's Department and the Riverside School District. We took a look at that, and our law director, I think, correctly made a decision, and it probably does not comply with the Ohio Revised Code. So, while that was submitted for your review in March, it didn't get on your agenda, because it's just not ready, quite frankly. So, we have taken a step back from that and taken a different direction, which is that instead of these officers being school employees, that they will, they will be part-time city employees. So it, it has been over 20 years since we instituted the SRO program. The terms of that agreement really needed to be looked at closely anyway. So, we've incorporated all of the work that we did over that period of time into a revised SRO agreement, which essentially functions pretty much identically to how the full-time officer performs right now in the high school, and that will be the model going forward. It is, of course, up to the, those, those costs will be borne by the school district, so the, the determination of how quickly those officers can find their way into the schools will certainly be a function of how many candidates are available, whether or not they're able to fill those spots from a financial point of view over time. I think the goal was to have four officers in the schools by the next school year, and that would be our goal. But keeping in mind that most of these officers are going to come from, from the retired ranks of the Mentor Police Department. So they would be rehired under this scenario as part-time employees. And then, you know, the details are in there, but, you know, this council's fully aware of how the SRO program works. We would see this working a whole lot differently in the other schools, but the, but the contract is, is different, and it, you know, and it clearly lays out those responsibilities. I want to speak on your behalf, Chief, but did you have anything to add to that?
No, there has been a lot of time spent coming up with MOU with the school. I think we've worked really well together. It's taken some time, but I think we're close to the finish line. And our concern is the same as yours, and the same as the person who spoke. We definitely want officers in the school. School safety is always our top priority. Where our schools go, our community goes, so we're always concerned with that.
Yeah, I mean, this is really just another step in the great cooperation we've had with the district in number of programs that have been contributing to better, better safety in our, in our school, school classrooms and, and facilities. So, we're excited to go forward with it, and hopefully, we will be ready to go by the next school year.
All right, thank you, Ken. And I'd like to challenge both you and Joe to have this ready for our next council meeting, which is in two weeks for tonight. I know that might be a little bit tough, but I, you know, to Lynn Mazika's comments, you know, if there's a 40-hour training period that has to be done, the sooner we get it nailed down and ironed out, so everybody knows what, what we're doing moving forward.
Well, we can't, we can't speak for the actions of the school board, so they'll have to review this and adopt it as well, but we want to make sure. So we'll, we'll get it, we'll get the draft over to them tomorrow, I'm sure.
Okay.
And if it's satisfactory, or there's some changes, we, I feel pretty comfortable, we could probably work that out, but.
That'd be great.
It would be, it would be ideal to have it passed before summer break.
Yeah, so, so we'll get it done, and then over to the school board, and the ball's in their court.
It, yeah, it, it does change some of the dynamics of how we were proceeding prior, though, because now we'll be going out for interviews and applicant, to get applicants versus the school district, but we're still looking at the same people. And we've stayed in touch with a lot of our retired, recently-retired police officers who have expressed an interest.
Okay, great.
Mr. President, Mr. Flippiac, thank you. That's the best explanation we've had since February. We've sort of been left in the dark on this whole thing, and I really appreciate that. That's a lot of information you just gave us, and it's a lot of information that people are asking, because they pay attention to the school board and the council meetings, too. And they're wondering what's happening, and that's, that's a great explanation. I really appreciate that. It tells us what's really going on. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more speaker on this topic. David Lima. If you'd like to come up. Name, address, four minutes.
Dave Lima, 7774 Litchfield Drive, Council President Blake, council members, city manager, Flippiac. This is kind of reinforcing some of what has just been expressed, but I do want to urge council to move expeditiously and without delay, and sign an agreement to provide Mentor Schools with police officers who will act as school resource officers in the coming school year. For your information, I think the school board is planning a special meeting June 27th. So hopefully, if they have the agreement, they will be able to take action on it at that time. Discussion and extensive planning have occurred over the past year, as mentioned, between Superintendent Heath, Police Chief Gunch, and City Manager Flippiac. These individuals have worked diligently and finalized the details of the agreement, and in February of this year, a resolution concerning the finalized agreement was passed unanimously by the school board and forwarded to the city. The safety of our students is of utmost importance. School resource officers enhance school safety and security. Their presence provides a visible deterrent to potential threats and allows for quick intervention in emergencies. Providing a safe learning environment for students is critical in achieving academic excellence. School resource officers contribute to a more positive environment by fostering positive relationships between law enforcement, educators, and students, and by serving as a resource for students, teachers, and administrators. Safe schools are a win for the Mentor community. I urge city council to move forward with this agreement without further delay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
One more thing on new business. I, you know, I, we heard tonight from Councilman Martin about the fire levy, and maybe reducing it for some, for our residents. And for me, the fire levy's sort of sacred. I mean, we went to the voters for it, and there was, the voters passed it by a large margin to make it permanent. And, and I'm not saying that's not a bad idea, to give back something to the residents. And I think maybe council as a whole maybe could offer some other suggestions. One that I would do is what we've done in the past years ago. We, you know, we took a chunk out of the yard waste and the dispose, the waste management bill for our residents. And that, to me, would seem a lot more simpler. Just look at the numbers and, you know, maybe you can compare how much we would deduct from a fire levy versus how much we could deduct from the waste pickup. So, and that's, I don't know, we, we, right now, we contribute a fair amount, I think about half of the bill for, for, and the yard waste is very insignificant. So maybe we could, you know, look at comparison instead of touching the fire levy, maybe go with something similar, like money-wise, but, you know, for the yard, yard waste and that. And maybe there's some other suggestions, council, we could. I know we're, we've mentioned a thousand times that we're really doing real well, but, you know, anything could happen. We could be in a recession, that we could have a downturn, and I'm certainly not expecting that with the way the, the city's doing. But nevertheless, it'd be nice if we got some more suggestions, too. It's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Second.